10th, 2025. Commissioner's courtroom, 162 West First Street, Trinity County Courthouse, Groveton, Texas, 75845. And if, Mike, would you mind taking this to prayer? If y'all can stand, please.
You bow your heads this morning. Gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful, God, that we have another day that we can serve you. We ask you today to be with us as we conduct the affairs of this county, give us wisdom, and God let us do the best that we can do for our people. I thank you for every blessing that you have bestowed and given us. I ask you to bless our country, our state, and our county, and we ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And this is what we have on our agenda today, budget workshop, so we'll just kind of open it up from there.
I just had a... I'd like to know how much increase was to every... all insurance per individual this year? Do we kind of have a figure on that?
The insurance you're talking about, each employee's health insurance?
Yes, ma'am. That's what he asked.
Everything is built into the budget at that new rate, based on the number of full-time employees that each department has. There is something that we... But some of those full-time people that we have built into your budget actually do not take health insurance. So I don't know if you want to change that or not, but it's built in so in case that person leaves, it does not need insurance and you hire someone else. It'll already be built into their budget. But that's something, if you're needing to reevaluate that, we can look at who is actually taking the health insurance and budgeting for just those individuals. For example, my office, there's three people, so my budget has three full-time people calculated at that insurance. But I cannot take that insurance. So that leaves me with showing up the budget because I'm going to use that. But if someone comes in and takes my place in budget here, then you'll need to bring that, those funds back in for that person within six months.
What was our last year's rate per? Do you remember?
It was about thirteen thousand and some odd cents. I don't know if I have here. But it is now fourteen thousand, three eight five twelve. I think it went up about nine hundred dollars.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
We got like a... How many do we got full-time? Like fifty or sixty or a hundred? Bonnie, how many do we have full-time?
Uh, payroll is about there. I think we're... Is Warren in there in this meeting?
No.
No. I know that our payroll has been over a hundred and three. Uh, I think not... Let's see how many sports time. Probably seventy-five?
I thought it was seventy-three, twenty-six.
Okay.
Yeah, seventy-three, four-time.
So I would say seventy-five, thirty. So you're right, yeah. So it's in that bottom part. So seventy-five, full-time.
Sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Great city insurance, okay.
Keep an eye on it. I did go through the after-full-time positions. I went in and calculated that insurance into that budget so you can see the impacts of that budget. Except for JP one and four because I didn't have that information until that last meeting. So I left there with part-time. So if you need to pay, you can. I've also given all of the employees that one and a half percent payroll step increase in the budget also.
Do we know a total of what that would be, Bonnie? With the one and a half percent?
Uh, no. Oh, the one and a half percent overall? I mean, it did increase the budget by very much. That one and a half percent doesn't really impact on the number of employees that are eligible that much. It's going to be your insurance and additional full-time people who are going to make the difference.
So there's no number amount to how much of the increase?
I don't have... I don't have your funding, but I can calculate for you. I mean, let me look at the bottom number here real quick. Sort of general fund.
Just trying to see how much extra we have to work with.
Yeah, I... Yeah, I see what you're asking for. You know, what's the percentage of increase? The overall budget, even with all the changes I put in. Raised at two point nine percent, and that's with everything included. Except for whatever additional funds we need to transfer over to Road and Ridge to complete your budget. But I've built in everything else that needs to go over to Road and Ridge. So if we're looking at overall increases, we should still be about a three point two percent increase over last year. Same as our revenue increase is from last year. Three point two-nine. But if you'll look on the... The page... I apologize for the page numbers on this one. No, the next one will have the page numbers of Trinity's in Grant for some reason. But when you get to the very bottom of the general fund, I've got revenue built in, and I've got expenses built in, and estimated budget amount. And with everything I've put in, I'm still short a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars.
You're at how much?
Over a hundred... A hundred fifty-five thousand dollars short versus what I entered for revenue and the difference between that and expenses that I've estimated. Again, that's the additional full-time people and additional requests that all the offices have asked for. So when you start making those changes, you have to start reducing that one dollar and we'll have more to, you know, to work with. But I threw everybody's in there, like I said, except JP one and JP four, full-time assistants. The rest of them, they're in there.
You said that's without the full-time assistants? Your hundred fifty-five?
That's the... Well, it's only two employees that I didn't include. But JP one, JP two and three, their budget, I've included what their clerks would make and how much with insurance their budgets would be with a full-time clerk. I left JP one and four with part-time clerk because they had not told me yet what they wanted. And I believe they asked the court in the last meeting to do the same, if you could, make them full-time. Unless we anticipate any additional revenue, and I think you guys are going to stay with me, no more than the, what, the five-point tax increase? Just the five-point?
Yeah, three-nine.
Three-nine.
Yeah, five... Yeah, five point... Point five-three-nine percent?
Yes.
Which gives you a tax increase of less than three twelve-two-nine. I don't think you're planning on doing anything above that, right?
Yeah.
I think that...
So...
I think that Mary's had it on there and so did Mr. Stubbs. And it didn't have Keith and it didn't have Richard on there, on the budgets that I got, so...
That's what it says right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I included, well, I did the JP one, full-time.
Yeah. JP one and two are full-time requesting and JP three and four didn't have their paperwork in time, I don't think.
Right, that's right. But if you want to look at JP one and two with their clerk, that's fine, that's going to be oh-four-fifty-one. This is okay, I was finding that second column, oh-four-fifty-one. And you're going to see what it does to their budget by increasing that person's full-time. The insurance is a twenty-one... Twenty-one percent increase. Because that also increases your retirement that we withhold, based on the status of all of those fringe benefits that we match.
So it goes up from a hundred and eighteen to...
To a hundred and forty-four.
To a hundred and forty-four. Y'all figure where that's coming from?
If you leave them alone at part-time with one and a half percent increase, you can look at the next page. JP, what, three? If they, there's going to be a less than one percent increase because of the one and a half percent.
One fourteen to one fifteen. Yeah.
Correct. But there is your comparison of the difference.
I guess, like...
I know it's difficult decisions when you're trying to deal with employees who come from full-time, but there's a lot of overhead costs involved.
I guess what needs to happen is kind of like what we do every year around this time is we need to just walk through this thing. And I've highlighted what I think... And with this paper, Bonnie has put everything that's... That I guess the people wanted or added in there, what I've highlighted on this budget. And if y'all don't... I mean, I guess we just go through each one and talk about it or decide this is what we need to do or... Brandy?
Yes, if you'll go through from...
I'm looking at the... I'm looking at the...
That's heading on page one. Your third page by the court would tell me what you want to change, draw it, think about adding. I would leave on that one.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the budget from last week. That's the one I highlighted on, so...
I would say...
Okay, the first... The first thing is that comes on page... Well, it don't have page numbers on it, but it's on the IT. It's on the IT. And it shows a full-time position... I mean, a full-time position and a part-time position added. That's the new... The new position is a part-time. And then also, you answered my question last week about the services contract. Excuse me. You... Yeah, you answered my question on that, so we don't need to talk about that. That's... But the only thing new that I see is going to be the part-time position on this budget. So...
Correct.
We need to, I guess, talk that out and see what we want to do with that, hash it or not hash it. Is it... The... One of the reasons for hiring this person is because we're going to have to do some... I forgot what you said last week. Do some upgrading or do some transitioning over in some database or something like that from Spanish, from English or Spanish?
Yeah, our website, we have the ADA accessible to the public with everything that we post when our main...
And this is from TAC, correct? TAC said...
It is, well, it's a state federal mandate. TAC will help us. I often say they actually do it and it says that, no, you'd have to hire someone outside.
That was my question.
Or you do it yourself.
That was my question if this one, you know, could we do like a one-time, hire somebody to... If TAC would do it or whoever else is in the market to do it, could we do that versus hiring another employee?
They would also be available. I know he's planning on being out for, you know, three-way weeks when he's married. So during that time, there is going to be no one in-house at all. Of course, that's, you know, trying to hire somebody, well, it would be no member. So having someone that you can face the skill to run to each office and help them with their fax, printers, things of that sort. And when he's working on major projects, which require higher level experience, a part-time person can help with the general business issues that all the offices have. Our support tickets are every day for different problems for all the offices with all their business and office equipment. That's copy of faxes and everything.
Are we still doing some outside contracting as well?
Yes. We do. We have one basically like a retainer so many hours a month. If we have a situation where we've got to call in for expert help, they can remote in or if we need them to come in, they can. We're paying a minimum amount, you know, they charge for two hundred dollars an hour.
How much?
Five hours. Five hours.
How much they charge, ah?
Four hundred an hour.
Okay.
But we retain them for five hours a month. If we don't use them, they'll... They're kind of not to carry that over. So then we do need them for a long-term project. We're not out of a lot of extra money because we pay them basically to be on retainer, be on call. You have to have a contract with them where they will draw everything they do and kind of unless you've got a contract with them. They were very instrumental on cyber security issue we had last year here for. And so other issues with updates for our network system. And they are also being called, which I say, with their time, on any questions on the grant, on cyber security grants that Sean's been working with fifty-one. So we still need them because they're the engineers. They're the expert experts. Sean's kind of a very long way and he has his credentials, secrets approved so he can go into jail or sheriff's, DA's office or anything like that and has approval by the Department of Justice to go in and touch the proceeding that's going on. This person that we're looking at is more of a just daily office runner and answering the phone, calls, people like, you know, like fax down, computer, things of that nature that he cannot always immediately get to if he's working on something else. It's really wrong. So that was the request. That's the reason for it was. But again, this is just a court decision, so... If you want to take some things out and then you come back later after you take some things out and read, you'll get that if you do it that way.
I just know we're a hundred... Like you say, right now, we're a hundred and fifty-five thousand out.
Right.
In the hole, and we've got to figure out what we're going to do. You know, I... Y'all have any discussion or anything about...
Well, we just need to earmark everything that's increased because the first thing that I remember this morning was that we've lost a hundred and fifty thousand or say a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in our timber allotment. We lost that. So that's out of the budget. And now we have an increase of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars just to keep everybody's insurance. So we already looking at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars just in two items right now. Insurance increase for all employees.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the increase on the evaluation is two sixty, correct? Is that what it was? Two seventy?
That's if we leave it the same.
That's if we leave it the same. Two sixty, two seven. And I was looking for the sheet. I know I got it somewhere. Two seventy-three.
So I think we just need to go through every one of them and see what they've got earmarked, what we can and what we cannot do. We don't have any monies to extend. We can't extend, but if we do, then we are sure to take everything in consideration.
Yeah, just let's go through and then if you want to say, let's take that out for now and then see what the bottom dollar is. And then if there's something to work with then you can come back and go, okay, now let's put this back in.
I think that's the best bet.
That's the smartest move that we can do right now.
Yeah.
Before adding any new positions across the board, we need to look at what we can and can't do.
Just leave it as it was. Give their employees a one and a half percent step increase. Calculate for the insurance, retirement, and, you know, small increase with low value that went up on the employees that have that and see what your bottom dollar is.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Want to start from the top? County judge is first?
Well, I'm kind of... I got them highlighted and that's kind of where the first increase was is in the budget is the IT. The next is grant writer, a part-time position in the grant writer.
Can that be... Can the grant writer position... Can the funds be built into the grants they get? Miss Bonnie?
Oh...
To pay the assistant?
It can be, yes. On some of our grants. In fact, right now FEMA is... Will reimburse us for part of Vicki's work on all of that grant or all of them. They will send us, you know, reimbursement and any of these big grants that we have, we can include administrative time that they spend on working on those grants, which will come back to the county. Good. The grants have just exploded with the number of what we've got. I had Robert Plaschke on one for the essential grant. They're doing a desk audit of everything and it's taken a lot of time for them to... The governor's office recently having audited... They're auditing us right now on some of our grants. And the amount of information we require is tremendous. So having another assistant in there, part-time, to take phone calls, look up stuff, and then have Vicki help me with some of this stuff that we're required to, would be great. Again, that's a wish list.
There's... I don't think there's no argument with him because she had to deal with FEMA and still dealing with FEMA and that's kind of a little bit out of the realm of grant writing. But she's also... She's also got a lot of grants and applied for a lot of grants from different people or different departments.
And it's also more out there.
And if you're saying that even if partial of this new part-time person, if partially we can get it from grants, grant paid for, then, you know, that'd be something worth looking at. If we can get some grant money to pay for that position, definitely, you know. But I guess that's another one that we can set aside until we get to the end and try to figure out if we can fit it in there or not. I mean, y'all have anything to say about that?
Yeah, that's what we need to set aside. Yeah, I mean, if... That would be...
And the next one on that, on hers, is the mileage line item. I know she's having to go to a lot of, basically, these, I guess, grant interviews, I guess you'd call them, to these different counties or different areas that are giving these grants. She's having to go present our information to try to get this grant. So I agree with, you know, her getting reimbursed for some fuel, for sure.
She's not reimbursed now when she goes?
She is, but I... And I think it's going to be the same, I would imagine, but there just wasn't no line item in there. They're putting a line item in there that she's allotted, you know...
We just want to split it out so it's identified as mileage on travel for grant purposes and not relative, say, to supplies of conference and education because that's totally separate on the education.
She talked a figure of about fifteen hundred, is that correct?
No, it's... She's asking for three hundred.
Tell me you needed a line item of fifteen the other day when I talked to her.
Well, this... My budget from last week says three hundred. A new lineup for fuel.
Yeah.
And I don't think that every grant requires her to come, but, you know, if it's... Obviously, if it's a requirement, she needs to be there to try to apply for this grant, so... I mean, if it... Whatever the amount is, I guess. I mean, if it's worth going up there and we've got a good shot at getting it wherever. I think she had to go to Fort Worth or something a couple of weeks ago or something.
Everything's on hold on FEMA right now still?
Uh, no. I approve some others on Colbert's. We should be getting more of your money from the front of Colbert that we're issuing. But we should have it by end of this month and that should be done. The only other thing they're waiting to do is Vicki's administrative time that we turned in. And they'll approve that. That's easy.
Do you remember the mount on the... Do you remember the mount that's left? I can get with Vicki and we can work that out.
Yeah, Vicki... Vicki will have it. I was trying to think because I saw the mounts, but I don't know what the total is for all of you, but it's strictly on all the Colbert's. Chris and Cory, I think they have more. But all of you got Colbert's that were reimbursed. No, we're with the L.
Okay. So setting that one aside, the grant writer, we can move on. My next...
You want to reduce that? I mean, take that out?
We'll just... We'll set it to aside for just a minute and see what we can come up with.
See where you're at.
Yeah. Next one is the district clerk wanting to turn one part-time into a full-time. I believe... Oh, and she's also wanting to increase conference and education from three thousand to thirty-five hundred. Looks like an increase from twenty-two thousand, five hundred to thirty-one thousand, fifty. So roughly nine thousand dollars. Total budget increase is thirteen...
Point ninety-seven.
Point ninety-seven, almost fourteen percent.
And again, this is going to have to be evaluated.
Um, sorry. That's going to... Insurance is already added in there. It's going to increase insurance fifty-nine percent just in her budget.
Yeah, you see the insurance has been increased. You see fifty-nine...
Yeah.
Their insurance or employees, you have fifty-nine percent.
A fifty-nine percent increase. So we're going to agree on that one needs to be...
We need to reevaluate that when we get to the end. Got JP one next?
Did you hear that, Bonnie? We're going to pull that and set it aside. Next one is JP one. And she's asking for a full-time clerk, which is changing right about the same, a little less actually, eight thousand dollar increase on that. And then also conference and education from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred. It's going to be a twenty-one point five-nine percent increase on her budget. In there for that, three hundred dollars in addition to that.
It's actually JP three that asked for full-time, not two, maybe two didn't. I just read four, we got one of Bonnie.
Okay, so JP three, you're saying JP three is the one that is asked for the full-time? Just one and three, not two and four?
One and three asked, yes.
And that's the only thing that.
And Steph told us to, but he turned it in later than that on, so.
That's the, um, that's the only thing that, that Keith Johnson is asking for.
His is only less than one percent, point ninety-eight percent.
Well, no, that's not with, they don't have the added full-time in there, so.
Okay, let me start with some of the reports.
It's only gonna be for a few months. Yep. But once you give it, you never take it back. You gotta keep that in mind.
I think on all the full-time we're gonna put on hold just to see where we're at when we get to the bottom line because we're already at a hundred fifty-five thousand and we ain't even considered a lot of the stuff that we had even. I mean, like the, the timber and stuff like that, it's gonna be a big cut for us, a big cut.
So, so Bonnie, we'll set those aside till we figure out exactly how much money we're gonna have without doing any new positions. The next one would be the county attorney's office asking for a, a vehicle allowance.
He does an allowance.
For twenty, twenty-five hundred.
But Bonnie, he already gets an allowance, but he's asked for an increase, all right?
He does not get a vehicle allowance.
Yes.
He does not.
Well, it don't show it on here, but I thought he did.
I don't see it.
I think you're probably thinking estate, state cover.
No. I thought he got a, uh, allowance, a car allowance. He didn't take it last year.
Oh, he asked for it last year and then withdrew it.
And then withdrew.
I thought that he was gonna do a line item swap, take some from one line item and add it to that.
No, not from, not the way this looks. Um, I know he does go to the different courts and help them, JP court or somebody, he does not have a line item or doesn't have a vehicle allowance.
I thought he had a, a line item that had it in it, but he was asking for an increase like Nancy did last year.
She, she asked for an increase, but he asked for one, he didn't have one.
And then he withdrew.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this year he's asking for it again.
Have we jumped district attorney?
Um, but there's nothing, there's no increase on district attorney.
Yeah, there was nothing.
Okay, just one point ninety-three percent, I guess they just raised.
Well, I would've swore he had an allowance.
No, he withdrew last year.
Well, I remember that.
He told me that he was gonna swap with something else, but it's not written that way on here. Well, I might need to ask him about that.
What he turned in was a, in addition to admin.
Put a line item in there.
Yes.
That's the only increase really he had, like the four point five, four percent. Colder.
Correct.
Let's, I guess let's put that aside and then if.
Let's hold it for me.
See if what he told Stevens true or what, what have you seen.
I, I asked him that question, if he had something that he could swap. He said, yeah, but he didn't say that he was going to, so we might need to clarify what he wants to do.
Okay.
Well, he can only remove it if he's not moving from existing with being education or supplies. So he'd have to reduce one of those, everything else is payroll related. Can't change those.
Can they use that SB twenty-two money for education since we sent that money back last year?
Bonnie, Mary's asking, can you use the SB twenty-two money for education? Because we had to send some back last year.
Uh, the county attorney can hire new employees and all of their insurance and so forth can be used. Now, he's existing on Stateville twenty-two.
No, what we're, what we're saying is like, could he move some from his, you know, education into a vehicle allowance and then use some SB twenty-two money for education?
For education?
Yeah.
I, now, I guess strictly the, uh.
Salary.
Paycheck on that is different than the sheriffs and the constables there, strictly for payroll and for equipment. Uh, the county attorney and district attorney is for their office, so education could, would be considered part of their office expenses. So that's possible, so let me check on that. They're very strict on that Stateville twenty-two, but steps, uh, theirs are a little more lenient on what they can use theirs for than the sheriff's. Uh, let me check on that.
I know he does travel, he does go to the, he goes to Apple Springs and he goes to training for some courses, um, so. And I, and I believe I said this last year before he withdrew it, that, that, uh, he shouldn't be spending his own money to go to these, to help out the JPs and to help out, I don't know if he still does the cities or not, I don't know. But I know he helps out the JPs and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, if he don't, you know, let.
Let's, uh, let's let Bonnie check on this and if it can with that SB twenty-two money, go ahead and, so like, let's just make a notation of it. I, I mean, I'm in favor of helping Coldering out when he travels to court. You shouldn't pay out of your pocket.
Yeah.
For sure, you shouldn't pay out of your pocket.
So, we're moving on, um, the next one would be the treasurer's office asking for a part-time clerk. Um, that's gonna be.
That, that ain't built in, is it?
No, it's not built in. Eighteen thousand ninety-six dollars more, a hundred percent increase on, on that line item, which is not built in, so. It's gonna be about a sixteen point four seven percent increase. I think we need to do the same thing, set it aside.
I think we need to set it all aside and get the actual number of what it's gonna be with the insurance and benefits with the employees and then we take this list where they're asking and go by it, but.
All right, so the next one that, that I've got would be the, um, Bonnie, you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You get that about the, the treasurer's office?
Yes.
Okay. The next one would be the jail. I, I don't know. I guess there's some, some new line items, it says, um, I don't know, it says need six, six dispatch jailers, needed actual salaries, two hundred, three thousand. That's what I highlighted because I really didn't understand that and then also a dispatch supervisor, which is a, a new position. What it looks like in here.
Dispatch supervisor, been there. That was in this last budget.
Uh, I don't think so, I, I'm looking at the last budget as well, I pulled it up and, um, there's no dispatch supervisor in there. I got it on, I got it on my computer, the last budget, and I'm comparing the two as we're talking on ever, on, on every one, every department.
What's that?
That's last year. What I'm getting is last year, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, at any given time, I could be wrong, but I added up, I added up the jailers, dispatchers last year, uh, that we approved was three hundred sixty-six thousand ninety-nine dollars total, just for salaries. This year in twenty, twenty-twenty-six is gonna be four hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is about a ninety-six thousand dollar increase.
You have, you added four jailers?
We've had those jailers before last, that, that last year had those jailers in it.
So the increase is ninety-six thousand?
And Jeremy's in here, you could, you could attest to that if, if I'm wrong.
You're adding this more, you're adding this more.
I'm adding, I'm adding total, part-time and full-time from both budgets.
Right.
I don't have to look at what you're looking at, but as far as our dispatch supervisor, that was an adjustment that was made on the SB twenty-two side. So all it was is there was a, a step added for the, uh, dispatch supervisor into SB twenty-two, but her salary rate at the county level stayed at the same level, if I understand correctly.
Did you hear that Bonnie?
Yes, sir. So we need to just roll that up into dispatch jailer?
Correct.
It shouldn't be, I, I mean, I guess it can be its own line item, but it shouldn't be an added position.
No, yeah, and she was already positioned.
Oh, yes, I indicated that as added.
Basically.
Breaking it out, swagging it off the table.
So basically what Chief is saying, if I understand correctly, is that he took one of his positions as dispatcher and promoted her, but using the extra money from SB twenty-two.
Correct. So it didn't change the number of personnel overall and didn't reclassify it into a different pay grade or pay status or anything on the county side.
Well, Jeremy, it says animal control, we had animal control.
That was a funded position through a grant, so it wasn't a budgeted line item personnel spot covering this next one, you know, that's what we're looking at doing. If the cities were gonna get on board and do, uh, collect the heaven, it doesn't seem that's gonna be the case, so that position's not gonna be a funded county salary position or line item, it's just there for the grant.
Is that grant money's done with after this?
Yeah, I think we have Bonnie here with a run of maybe twenty-four, twenty-five thousand left, so we're gonna basically pay that out however long it goes. If you don't put that as a, as a line item, then when that money runs out and all our responsible funding, then we'll just cease the animal control aspect of what Sheriff's Office is doing.
So Bonnie is, uh, have we applied for that grant again or can we?
I don't think that's a recurring grant.
No, that came down in the local government grant, those funds are expended all except for twenty-four thousand, three fifty-five that are sets that still remain pending animal control officer. That's on the very last page of your budgeted, um, special listed funds.
But that's, that's not, that's not a recurring grant, so we can't, it doesn't open up every year across the key we'll find for it.
So he's correct, it's not recurring, we've expended everything except some interest on that grant, but that's what's remaining.
Okay.
I know that.
So what?
Bonnie, I know there's a, you know, everybody's getting the one and a half percent, I know that'll chew up some of this that I'm talking about, but I don't think, not that much. Last year, it says on this budget that we approved, um, dispatch jailer's salary, there was ten in parentheses, um, two hundred and thirty-six thousand is what we approved, two hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four. And then also part-time, it says parentheses three or six, uh, eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight, which entails, that adds up to three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. The new budget shows, uh, full-time is going to three hundred and seventy-five thousand and part-time is eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five, which that is a ninety-six thousand dollar increase.
What, what is it?
It, what we need, because I looked at the actual, that had already been spent through July. That's why I've gotta work with payroll because I need to see if some of this increase is due to, uh, individuals leaving and something relates to vacation or some long time to push that amount way above what we budgeted.
I think that's, I think that's what ended up happening for your year today, experience years, you lost several very veteran officers that had a lot of time, so Linda left and had, I mean, who, I mean, she was capped out on all of her time, so when she left, that was what, maybe thirteen, fourteen thousand that we paid out of that. Fanchin, I believe, was in a similar, similar position, uh, nine also left, so there was a lot of departures with a lot of banks capped out time and we paid out of that. So if she based the increase off of the year-to-date expenditures for this budget cycle, that's gonna be wide, you, you lost a bunch of seasoned employees that you're cutting massive checks.
Well, what I'm getting at is we don't need to add that in there because this is, that's, Fanchin got her money.
Correct, correct, that's, and I think that's what Bonnie was saying, she has to let me just pull up those numbers for the year-to-date spend and look at when it's just salary or not, those departures plus when we paid them out and we're also having hired new people to fit in those spots, you're almost double pulling salaries because he's giving them their exit money plus we're still funding those active positions.
Well, at, at the end of the day, we gotta work off of zero amount of dollars and we can't add in there more than what that line item needs, more or less.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll be the situation fine, so if people start leaving, let them know that, that salary was already budgeted for the yearly amount, however, if people start leaving that are capped out, that's gonna give up that salary line item that we specifically budgeted for any set number of hours.
I need to work with payroll, that may be a good time to do it since we're doing payroll today. They have to run a report on all of those individuals, see what they're currently at and then of course, that's for that one half, they'll add one half percent to their payout.
When did we add?
I did add it to the administrator, to the county administrator and your, this dispatcher supervisor, which is a separate line item, I just rolled that back up into dispatch jailer line item.
But it needs to be different, it, it needs to be different between the, than what the position pays and what they're paying extra for SB twenty-two, it needs to be different, the feature, it needs to be different.
Well, they all, Stateville twenty-two is a totally separate budget and those accounts being paid to them, Stateville twenty-two is not even included in all in this general budget. That's what I'm saying, say, count.
When did, when did we add the four jailers in there for the variance? What year? It was before last year, before we approved last year's budget.
It was twenty-four, we did it.
So we can't, we can't blame it on that, you know what I mean? Because we had that, we had that fit in the budget before, so.
We, we need to check, see how much the payout was because we're looking at an increase of almost thirty-five percent, so.
Well, and that's the one where I said we need actual salaries, that's, but I went ahead and aired on the side, a little bit more than less, just to see where it would, you know, put us until we got those final numbers, so we'll get the final numbers.
Our main objective is to get to a plus.
We've gotten to get to a plus without a tax increase.
And I need to check with, uh, the unemployment insurance that was built in last year way off of what we've actually paid. So I'm basing the new budget on workers' comp and unemployment based on what actually being paid to tag. So that's why you see a big increase in some of these. So that's why you see a big increase in some of these. There was no other changes to the jail, other than the estimated salaries will be higher.
Well, I guess we need, since we're talking about this, we need to talk about these four jailers. What are we going to do? We don't have the variance no more. We hired them for the variance. I've talked with Treasurer's Office, and I think he, over there, they're short that four jailers. They haven't hired those positions yet. They've been running it for, Jeremy and Mike can tell us, but I checked about three weeks ago, and they were, they were four short at the jail. So that's those four positions.
Four short here?
At the jail.
Staffing, like currently staffed?
Yeah.
Says who?
But the Treasurer's Office.
I believe that's incorrect.
Yeah.
Full staffed here.
Yeah. Well, they're under the impression that, that it was four short about three weeks ago.
I think he was talking about deputies, wasn't he?
It was the jail. They had spreadsheet on jailers and dispatchers, and they were four short. I think Bonnie lost us here.
I think we lost her.
Now, I don't know if you guys are just listening.
Oh, there's just something that popped up.
Maybe something timed out or something.
John took it on screen here.
I hope we have the list of the treasurer, okay?
Yeah. Maybe we can get him in here, maybe?
That'd be a good thing.
Or receive.
You want to get him, call him now?
You're going to get him?
I just checked with Wes, we're short one point times five, if you want to call it that, but I don't really got that number that was four short.
That's what, that's what she told us, or told me.
No, that's incorrect. That's incorrect.
Well.
Let me take a five-minute break over here.
Okay.
I'll just take a five-minute break, or take a ten-minute break.
Thank you. You're so kind.
Back to ten, ten. Oh, pretty, pretty good. How are you, sir?
It wasn't the boss, he sat in the committee.
But what I can tell you is, yes, I did tell the jail commission that we had not made the forward progress. A lack of communication existed between the commissioners' court and the sheriff's office, but now we're kind of hitting off.
Harold, what did I tell you about, about coming up to August? You knew we couldn't do it to August to save the people fifteen thousand?
You and I have had a conversation.
Okay.
So, well, I'm gonna, let me, let me, let me interject, Tommy, just a second. We had a committee together studying this whole jail led by our district attorney over there. We were getting blasted that we were not doing anything. We had it to a committee. We had plans, we had all of this, and then every time we turn around, we get blasted that we were doing nothing. We surrendered everything for the study to our, our committee that was selected and everything else. And then the next thing we know, we get persecuted for stuff that we drug our feet, we didn't do it. We had turned it all over to something. We had plans, we had all this, but yet the communication was not there. And we're here every time, two times a month, two times a month, that people could have talked back and forth. That's the problem. There's not enough reasoning together, okay?
There's not, there's not communication. I hundred percent agree with you.
Okay, well, we're here, so, we're here.
But the jail also wasn't discussed on either one of those meetings, every twice a month. But I think, again, we're giving away.
Let me get back on topic, let me get back on topic. And we just, I, I hate going off in the weeds because we're gonna be here all day dealing with this budget. I don't want to get this thing open, but, so, I, I somewhat disagree with you because we had, I thought we had everything in the position to, to go forward. I really thought that, you know, the jail commission would give us the variance again. But we're still missing the point of how are we going to justify it? Two hundred thousand more dollars. I come up with the idea, me and you, I run it past you, Polk County can't staff their jail. They're sending, they're sending people to Louisiana. I said, well, what if we do an interlocal agreement and they could take one of our vehicles here, these jailers can go over there so they can bring their inmates back over here and we can get some free, free jail space out of it. I think him, he run it past his boss and they talked maybe about it and, and from my understanding, they're, they weren't in agreement with me. I'm trying to save these people's jobs. Um, I did think that you were four short because that's what I was told. So I thought it'd be a little easier because I don't want anybody to lose their job. But when we're talking apples to apples here, we've got to stay in budget. We're, and we're a hundred fifty thousand dollars out of budget. If we keep doing that every year, sooner or later it's gonna deplete. And, you know, I, that was an option. I actually talked to, to one commissioner over there at Polk County and they said they would entertain that offer. So, I mean, with us paying the fuel to go over there and us saving some money on the back end for the jail space, you know, I, I thought that's how we could resolve it and I think, I don't know, but I figured these guys would go for that. You know, keeping those positions and hiring them over there, you know, or not hiring them, but we pay their salary for some free jail space. Now we're here, you know, we're a month away from having to approve this budget and this is where we stand.
I think, you and I talked, logistically and feasibly, I think that's gonna be a, again, a liability nightmare because you also have to take into consideration, you're not just housing or working with our inmates and our responsibility. Your covering assets are in the tower of the county, so, we're looking at workers' comp. They didn't enter on the job. Who's fault is that? Who's gonna cover that? Who's, who's covering that bill for that, that particular inmate? And then it's their county. If they go staffing, there's staffing issues there, but yeah, our, our people are working there. Who's not, not gonna say they're not gonna kick or reject our inmates because they have to take care of their county first. I mean, at the end of the day, each county is out for their own and it's, I mean.
I said there'd be some kinks that have to be worked out. I didn't say there's some kinks that have to be worked out. And I just figured that with, with four positions, that we could all work together and, and they would want their inmates back and, and we could pay for them to get staffed with four more guys and we get some free jail space out to do.
But, I mean, the thing about what you're saying, they're having to house out. So we put four staff there for them to bring their inmates back. That puts them right back in the exact same position. Their jail's now full with their inmates that they got sourced. So there's not gonna be room for us. So we're giving them free labor in exchange for nothing at that point.
There would have to be agreement that we got so many inmates in that jail for it to be feasible.
I think it's a lot, it's a HR nightmare.
But the fact, the fact is that we created these positions and we put it in the budget. And then y'all, you, you, whoever, got this variance pulled. It still costs the taxpayers the money. We're paying for these jailers that we're not getting any benefit out of as far as over there at the jail. That's a two hundred thousand dollar hickey.
I disagree with that.
Well, you, you may disagree with it, but.
I think we're gonna pull up workload and hours over the last three, four years, prior to the variance and post the variance, to see the amount of hours that individuals were working in excess. That's, we have one person doing the job with two and three people, auto-wise. Look, I mean, the, the, the timesheet's something alive. So I think, look, looking at the timesheet to see, one person is doing the job with two or three. Yeah, just because we weren't doing it before, a hundred percent, yeah. Could we do it? Were we doing it a hundred percent? Were we doing it to the best of the, the ability to be most effective and efficient way for, not only the county but for the jail staff there? No, I disagree.
Jeremy, too, uh, talking with a lot of other commissioners around the state, there's several counties that go together to have one jail. And, and they all have these interlocal agreements that wherever they put that jail and what county, those counties do their part to get in there with it. I thought, I think that's something that could have been really sit down and reason maybe with their legal people and our legal people to see if something could be worked out for. We don't want anybody to lose their jobs. There's nobody wants, we don't want that.
We didn't even entertain the, the offer. I mean, did you talk to anybody in Polk County about it? And, and us sending them over there to get some jail space.
No, we're, 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 we're just, listen. What you're talking about like a regional facility, they do have regional facilities that will combine their two or three county area that one county doesn't necessarily support the size of a full-size jail. And that's where you get grant funds or they put some money together in a pot. Collectively, here's how this administration works, here's how the management structure works. But everybody around us has their own facility, so we wouldn't be able to do a regional facility built centrally for, for each round of county. But everybody around us has a jail facility, so there would be no reason for them to pass a bond. You just do have to match some grant funds to build this justice complex to be able to do that. I mean, that would be a much further down the road, a ten, fifteen-year project, but that's not anything that could have been feasible with our current situation just because of everybody around us.
Hey, just, just for, for example, Houston County got one whole wing of their jail emptied because they can't staff. So that wing is just sitting there. I was just wondering if there's any way that people could get together and go, hey, we, we got people that come to their jail certified, everything else and something like that. Even try to find out if that would work for us and save us money. The, the problem that we have is we're such a poor county. We don't have revenue. We do not have oil and gas. We don't have all the money that all these other counties have got. But if they're struggling as well, talking to their commissioners, they're struggling. They can't get one wing open over there. It's just sitting there. Sixty, seventy beds just sitting there and just wondering if there's something that maybe attorneys could get together or see if we could work out an agreement like that. Now, I'm talking about building a new regional facility. I'm just talking about trying to reach out. Polk County's got problems. Houston County's got problems. So to see if that would be an alternative plan, but that's just me.
Boy, beat this department or jailer situation to death. I don't know, I don't know if we move on or what, um, rest of the budget, um.
I saw, uh, Lawrence, uh, analysis and the total amount of payroll. Uh, if I take that, of course, I think I was done through July, but I don't think the number of employees have changed. Let me verify the payroll on those, uh, the eleven full-time, the two-part time, the jailers. Uh, it's very possible to bring that total. If his estimate is correct and then give him a one-half percent increase for the step salaries, would bring the total for part-time full-time to maybe around three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is what I have up there at the top. So that eighty-seven thousand for part-time is part of that. But we could, we could probably shave off eighty-five thousand dollars, but I need to verify those salaries. Let me come back with that so you'll know. But it's based on those same numbers, eleven full-time to part-time.
You're saying you can shave off eighty thousand dollars?
Well, that, I'm just basing it on what.
I'll take those odds anytime. Add two hundred thousand one year and then give back eighty-seven the next.
I just don't know how you, how you take away from people's salary. I mean, it's a lot.
The budget was, was the budget for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand for full-time and eighty-six thousand for part-time. So I moved up to one-half percent for part-time, giving it eighty-seven thousand. And because based on the actual through July, we've paid out payroll for the full-time jailers and dispatchers. We'd already spent three hundred and twenty-six thousand and we only budgeted two hundred and seventy-nine. So I estimated the new budget at three seventy-five for full-time. It's estimated. And I'm not talking about the number of employees. I'm talking about the quality of the existing employees right now, which is the eleven full-time jailers, dispatchers and two part-timers. So let's get a better number on that full-time and part-time amounts. Like we're gonna do while taking the others out. This one area, Lawrence got the number on it, it's through July from what I understand. But I need to study a little bit closer and talk to him. Make sure that we've included all the payroll. I'm sure he has on this, but pay there in two weeks. Um, and get the one-half percent salary increase to him and see what our number is. Uh, the, the number of personnel that they have, that's when the sheriff, the jail and, and the commissioners' court. What we have currently, one of those would be budgeted.
Sheriff Mark, this one, keep going.
Might as well. We're not getting anywhere here.
Yeah, just bear mark that one, come back.
This whole, this whole.
I also just go the house, in my opinion.
The whole budget here was just, was everybody like to say kicking the can down the road is what everybody likes to say. Um, it's just, it just doesn't, a, a lot of this just doesn't make sense, you know? We could try to.
When I asked the question when we lost the variance about the jailers then, when we lost it, we should have got rid of four jailers. That's what they were hired for specifically. They said, no, you done approved it in the budget. If we approve it in this budget here, they can do what they want to for a year. So that's, to everybody's a notion. But we gotta save some money for, for the county. If this bond passes, we're gonna have to have a bunch of money to run this jail and to pay for it.
Well, I thought we were all kind of in agreement to take them out, so why don't we just take them out?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, take them out, Ms. Bonnie.
So y'all are gonna, y'all are gonna fire the four people?
No, sir.
Yes, y'all, that's exactly what's gonna happen with that, and that is fine. That is a decision that y'all are making to affect the livelihood of the four people because of the inaction of the county as a whole. So the precedence that we're setting right now is that if the county fails to do something, the problem of the people that are being paid for it or the employees that hired on to do the job for the county, that's, that's the precedence that y'all are setting at this point, which is fine. Y'all are likely to do it and that's what y'all are choosing to do. But I need y'all to understand what it is that y'all are doing, the precedence that y'all are setting for this county. Is that if y'all do something with the inaction on the county's part, it's gonna directly affect the livelihood of the people that have sworn to do this job. And so then in three to five years, if this bond passes and we build this jail, the exact fear that y'all have of not having the manpower to staff it becomes a reality. So now you're paying to house these inmates out of county because you don't have the staff to run this jail here. That's a decision that y'all are making. Y'all are likely to do it. That's y'all's responsibility. That's all I'm gonna say on that. That is a piss poor precedence that's being set by this county government.
Jeremy, I got a question. How about, so you're saying for three years, we're gonna keep the jail overstaffed?
It's not overstaffed. The workload is there. Well, let's pull the, let's pull up the payroll hours that have been worked by these, these jail staff for the last five to ten years. See what they were doing, how we're receiving the amount of work that goes into it. It's not a overstaffing issue. It's not.
I'm sorry, I was.
Well, let, let, let me back up to, let me just reply to what he said. This commissioner right here, precinct one, was under the impression that we did everything for that jail variance. I didn't go up there. I didn't fight against it or for it up there. So I don't know what happened between whoever up there, but we did everything we were supposed to do for the variance. Everything, in my opinion. So it's not gonna be on me that this variance got lost. It's not.
It's on the county. It's on the county as a whole.
I think, I, what I think, Jim, and I can agree with you a little bit on that, but I think a lot of emotions got in both sides, okay? And that's how we lost the variance. We didn't lose the variance because we didn't have everything in place. No, we didn't do that because, when did y'all go to Austin for this?
Fit work.
Did you have a plan up there, Mr. Danny, when you went? Did you take a plan?
So the, the jail, uh, board that we put together, committee, decided to do the, to do the, uh, bond in November unanimously instead of March. So it was before y'all went. So y'all had some legs to stand on because the committee said that we were gonna do it. We couldn't vote legally. We couldn't vote till August to put it on, uh, in November. So with you saying it's the county's fault, it's not precinct one, Tommy Park's fault. I'll tell you that.
It ain't two either.
I said, well, it's the county, county as a whole, collectively.
No, the problem is, and y'all both said it, y'all both said it, there's not, there's not enough communication going on between a lot of departments and that's the problem. We get too many emotions, too many people's holding grudges against everybody and that's the problem we have. So now, yes, we're at the point where I told you two months ago, give or take, it was two months ago, that, hey, how can we justify these four positions? Let's do an alternate and try to go to a different county that's housing theirs out. They're not gonna be fully staffed, I mean, fully, uh, capacity every day over there. So they can give us some free beds versus us paying four jailers for them, two hundred thousand dollars. They're gonna give us some space. So. So, I don't, I don't disagree with you much, but I disagree with you saying we didn't have our ducks in a row because we did.
Jail commission is the one who said this, Tommy. Jail commission said this is the standards that we want, these are things that we want in place in order for us to continue this variance in February. The jail commission director asked the judge a specific question and said, "Do you have signed authorized plans ready to move forward?" The answer at that point in time was no. And by that saying being no, that was what the decision was based on, the whole difference of variance at that point in time. So again, collectively, the county failed to loosen the rest that we need to go.
Jeremy, do you still have that on your computer?
You still have what?
When you read that over there?
Yes.
Yeah, you wanna read that now?
You want me to?
I, I'd like you to read it so they can hear it.
Sure.
Uh, we're, we're getting way off in the weeds.
Oh, but I.
Best job, we're gonna stop.
I wanna hear this, no, no, we go, I wanna hear this. And you tell me where if you is throwing them to the bus or not? Only thing I went, when I went, we was in compliance here. We spent the money and we only got to use it three months, and that's what it was. Three months on the, the variance? That's, that's all, the time we got in there, wasn't it, West, how many, how many months we get to use it?
February to last year.
I know it, but February to what?
So a little over a year.
We spent all that time in trying to get in compliance with the state, and we did.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Sheriff Jeremy Carroll and I'm the chief deputy here over the African County Sheriff's Office. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about the matter of great importance and apologize for Sheriff's Wallace's absence as he is still recovering from knee surgery. Our current jail is outdated, overcrowded, increasingly unsafe. It barely meets the legal or operational standards required to detain individuals who may or should maintain a safe working environment for our staff based on the many variances that y'all have before this. The infrastructure is deteriorating, the central systems such as plumbing, HVAC and security are failing. We're consistently operating over intangible capacity, again, thanks to the variance, putting pressure on every aspect of the jail operations. Over the past few years, our applicant inmate population has grown while the facilities remain unchanged. Beyond infrastructure, these conditions are also contributing to the staffing concerns. Officers face daily arrest to overcrowded housing areas, poor-lot assigned crumbling facilities, not to mention the number of miles an hour spent transporting inmates to other contract facilities across the region of Texas. We understand that, we understand that fiscal concerns expressed by the county judge and commissioners' court, however refusing to move forward is not cost neutral, it's financially and legally irresponsible. The cost of deferred maintenance, rising liability, emergency faces seems to run over a deliberate well-planned construction project we intend. Moreover, the commissioners' court approved and paid for initial work with an architectural firm to begin designing cost estimates, yet despite that investment, there's been no meaningful progress. The process has stalled and the court has not taken necessary steps to initiate a bond election which is essential to secure the funding and move this project forward. This lack of policy not only wastes taxpayers' money, it has already been spent, but it also delays the critical infrastructure of our community needs. Even more concerning, we have reasonably the county judge actively considering shutting down the jail entirely or at a minimum allowing our state variance lapse. This will lead to forced reduction in staffing, the termination of dedicated public servants and the reallocation of salary funds elsewhere in the county budget. This is not a strategy for managing public safety, it's a short-sighted maneuver that risks the lives, harms staff livelihoods and undermines the long-term welfare of our county. To make matters worse, we understand the county judge is actively engaging in discussions with other counties to secure prepaid defense-based agreements, contracts that will commit our county to paying for jail space regardless of whether it is J's. Not only does this lock us into long-term expenses without flexibility, it also directs our taxpayer dollars to support economies of other counties rather than investing in our own infrastructure or jobs or our community's future. This is also important to note, the commissioners' court on the jail committee made up of key stakeholders including representatives from law enforcement, the legal system and community leaders. That committee made a clear and collective recommendation that the county proceed with the planning development of a new jail facility. Despite this overwhelming recommendation, the extent of progress since then has been minimal. To date, the most notable steps taken has been the court's invitation to a consultant from U.S. Capitol Advisors to speak about the bond process. While this is a necessary conversation, it's far from sufficient, and we must move from discussion to action. Ultimately, the decision to build a new jail should rest in the people of this county. A bond election is not just a fiscal procedure, it's a democratic mechanism that gives our citizens the final say. The court's reluctance to move forward denies them that right. This is not just about bricks and mortar, this is about our constitutional legal responsibility and moral obligation to ensure safe and humane conditions for everyone, those in our county and those who work with the facility. Every day we delay increasing our legal exposure and puts lives at risk. The county cannot afford to be reactive any longer. We're calling this commission to support the sheriff's office and recommending immediate decisive action. We need a clear commitment from county leadership to take necessary steps to finalize design planning, initiate the bond, bond process and move forward with construction if that is what the citizens want. The sheriff's office fully commits to collaboration and transparency and fiscal responsibility, but we cannot do this alone. Thank you for your time and continue to service our community. The need is urgent, the cost of inaction is too high. We ask you to stand with us to take stand for safety and accountability in the future of our county. That's what was written to the, to the jail commission when the judge.
So you didn't know that we was gonna take this in August?
The discussion, there was no communication, we've already established it. There was a lack of communication among the judges.
Your, your boss, your boss didn't know it, that said on the committee?
I can't answer for my boss.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't there, but I can answer for the lack of communication. I think it's very well-known when it comes to the operations, the daily operations at jail, that I run a lot of the operations, yet there was no communication.
So, so what, why didn't you get informed with him? Y'all, y'all talk?
The lack of information.
Y'all don't talk?
Do you know what it's all?
Well, if he did, uh, he would know, I got a text message where he accepted it.
Again, that's a conversation between you and him, from elected official to elected official. Based off the information that I had, that's what I.
It's all right, Jeremy, it, this is just beating the old dog down the road.
You asked me to read it, sorry.
Yes, it was, thank you. I agree with one thing in that letter that Woody said. Shut that jail down, you'd save a lot of money. Make a historical marker out of it and ship them seven inmates and I believe you'd save money. Have you dispatched it over there? That'd be it, that ought to be considered.
If this jail bond fails, that's probably what's gonna happen, that the jail commission will probably shut it down.
But to keep four extra jailers for three years till we see if we're gonna be able to build the jail and get it built, that is not good financial, uh, stability, in my opinion.
We're ignoring the work load, I think is the big thing, but that's, again, y'all's decision, so.
Okay. Is there any more departments we need to go to?
In the, in the sheriff's office, they're adding telephone services, um.
Why is that?
From fourteen-five to twenty thousand, I believe.
What's that for, Jeremy?
I didn't, what was that?
The telephones, going from fourteen thousand to twenty thousand?
That's the increase from all of the camera system that required, the SIM cards that we talked about. Uh, there, some of that is the manpower, so some of the growth, the two, that growth is covering. That covers some of the equipment expenses that's related to their phones. Uh, and then I believe there were, I have a backup phone that was placed in dispatch when the insurance had had issues. That's its own dedicated line that you're having to now pay for services to grow.
And that's gonna, I think that's gonna be it on the, on the general fund budget. What I, what I would suggest, and I, I don't know if this is correct or not, Bonnie, you can correct me, is it seems like we're almost working backwards on this budget. I would like to see in the future, next year, let's start out, let's start out with the budget we accepted from the previous year. And then, then get this, if you will, wish list that Bonnie's made up, that everybody asked for, and decide what we can fit in and what we can't. Stuff added in there, the wish list stuff.
Right.
So if we start out, if we start out with ground level and then we get the wish list, we can add in as we go what we can afford versus take, come into a meeting and then having to take it all back out and then go forward with what we wanna go with. This, I'm just saying we're, if we could skip a step or two, you know?
And that's fine, because where we can all, all we can do is just your current budget and a, a sheet, a paper that says what they want to increase.
And then we could, you know, on the, on the sheet of paper.
That's really where we're at, yeah.
On the sheet of paper, you could put, on the sheet of paper, you could put, you know, what the increase is gonna go up for the one and a half percent, what the insurance is gonna increase, because it goes up every year, I believe, and then go forward with it.
We're locked in, and then we'll print it, we'll count it, we'll be sent along, so we all know that that is one and a half percent, or that increase is seven percent, or that that's gonna increase this, that percentage, uh.
Can we get you to do that for the next meeting, Bonnie?
We work backwards in the budget every year because it's like, let's see what our wish list gives us based on our revenue, and then we start remarking things away. And that's, that's how we've always done it. Um, we can change any way you like, but I need to know what your projection expenses are.
Ms. Bonnie, can we get you to make one of those for the next meeting and just put everything in there that we can't control, like the, uh, insurance and, and longevity and all of that?
I'm gonna take out, I'm gonna take out all of the full-time requests of all the people and what you told me to take out. So with the current budget and just get the increases.
Yes, ma'am.
Increase the insurance and give you a, just a.
And put the, put the wish list on the side, maybe?
Just those payable increases, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Judge, when do we have to have a preliminary approved? When do we have to have that done by?
What's the date, please?
And we have to have the whole thing by our last meeting, so.
But you gotta file a preliminary budget.
Yeah, we, we'll probably need to file one after the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
We'll have, we'll have to do, okay.
Just file it.
Preliminary.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.